Can I have a call? It's going to be Mayor Paul Tempe. Mr. Weeks? Barely here. Can you hear us there? Yes, sir? Can you hear us? I was just calling, we'll call. Hey, Mr. Garcia is calling in, he's joined, but he can't hear us or see us. Having technical difficulties, okay?
Sounds like connection.
Councilman Chavez? Mayor Paul Tempe Weeks? Sorry. Mayor Romero?
I'm here.
And Mr. Alfaro, Councilman Alfaro?
I'm here.
Thank you.
Alright, I got it. Yeah, we got it. Thank you.
Everybody? Were you guys able to hear me? Is everybody ready?
I heard you now, but I didn't hear anything other than that.
I can hear you, Ben.
Mr. Garcia?
Yeah, take this up?
Hey, Ben?
Yo.
We, uh, I have several people texting me, they're trying to get online. The link's not working for the public, general public.
I'm gonna have to make do.
What's that?
Probably gonna end up having to make do.
Yeah, cuz I had problems coming in.
Just have a message?
Sean Digital, tell them that we have the link and information, they could call in on our website. Everything's posted there for the meeting number.
Yeah, but the only thing that's posted here is a copy of the page. So, but, but, but it's not, it's not a link. I'm on there right now. It's just a, it's just a picture of the page. So when you click start meeting, nothing happens because it's just a picture.
Yes, sir, they would have to go to webex.com and then just enter that information. Once you go to webex.com, then join meeting and then it asks you for that information posted on the website.
Well, it looks like we got everybody. Henry, chief, everybody there. I'll go ahead and just get the meeting started. You ready, Norma? Norma?
One second, sir. Enriquez's connection, he's joining right now. Let me on.
Okay.
Enriquez back on? Ready, sir?
Yep.
Excuse me.
You want me to start it, Norma?
Sir, go ahead.
Alright, this is, we call, the town of Anthony, Texas. Post, Protection 55002 and 551. Of the Open Meetings Act of the Texas Government Code. It is, the meeting is starting at 6:47. Everybody, public, during the portion of the agenda for public comment. It's to that, during the meeting, the, our debate on matters being considered by the. Ms. Norma Gonzalez, can we do a quorum check, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Paul Tempe Weeks?
Here.
Councilman Garcia?
Here.
Councilman Alfaro? Councilman Alfaro? They would lose Councilman Alfaro in the. He did.
Yeah.
He's back. Councilman Chavez?
I see him.
See him. Yeah. Everybody, please refer to put your, yourself on mute if you're not gonna be talking cuz we have a lot of background. And if I put mute, when you wanna speak, it doesn't let you. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Alright, right now, open forum for the public, limited to two minutes. Norma, did you have anybody that message that called in? Anybody that went online about one speaking open forum?
No, sir, nobody that contacted the office is in regards to an open forum.
Please let the record reflect that. Now move on to, from five, question, new business. Current discussion, consideration enacted by the town council of the town of Anthony, Texas. To a man, it's number 2020 dash zero two eight, three, five, of three, two, five, of the Anthony. Pertaining to the COVID-19 pandemic, instituting emergency measures in order to establish enforcement of the duration through prosecution in the town municipal court. And following findings of fact, adoption, enactment, repealer, severability, effective date, and declaring that a violation of the ordinance is a misdemeanor offense and providing for enforcement and class C misdemeanor penalty, not $1,000 per offense. As you guys know, we had this on the agenda last time. Able, you know, so we can get on the line and get what they thought of the ordinance. And pretty much, you know, report back to you guys and, you know, get this agenda item on today. So we can, you know, either begin with the enforcement or at least have a clear, you know, idea, definition of where the enforcement is gonna be handled court wise and so forth. But, Henry, are actually.
Mayor, um, are you, did you call me? You were breaking a little bit, I don't know if you, you asked for me.
Yeah, I was trying to actually get with chief first, come in and go from there.
Okay.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, man, I'm here.
Go for it, chief, if you wanna start off.
Um, this is touching bases back on the original, I guess, order. What we wanted to do is we wanted to make sure that we can ascertain that we're able to file citations in the municipal court. This goes back to, of course, the original stay at home order. And speaking back to Mr. Palomares. We cannot file these types of citations with our municipal court with a current emergency order because it's a class B misdemeanor. And of course, since the municipal court cannot give any sort of jail time, only fine only. And we had, we reached out to make sure that we can see, we can do something else as far as, not with, not as far as the emergency order per se, but to do something similar to a city ordinance. So this is where we're at at this point. I know it's piggybacking off of the emergency order, but it's more on the city ordinance. Mayor?
That's, you know, pretty much how chief stated it. I mean, we went back and forth with the attorneys. I'll, I'll give the floor over to Henry to see if he has any comments in regards to the order.
Thank you, mayor. I had an opportunity to speak with the chief earlier today, and I meant to call him since Friday. As I looked over the governor's executive order, he had issued three orders on Friday, April the 17th. And one of the three orders deals with the restrictions, the stay at home restrictions. And reviewing that, that one order out of the three, it's executive order GA 16. Second page on that order, last whereas clause, right before the now therefore paragraph. Specifically indicates, and I'll read, whereas under section 418.173, failure to comply with any executive order issued during the COVID-19 disaster is an offense punishable by a fine not to exceed a thousand confinement in jail for a term not to exceed 180 days or both fine and confinement. And on the next page, on page. On page, I mean, actually, the last page, on page four, second to last paragraph, it specifically indicates, and I'll read, this is executive order shall supersede any conflicting order issued by local officials in response to the COVID-19 disaster. But only to the extent that such a local order restricts essential services or reopen services allowed by this executive order or allows gatherings prohibited by this executive order. I hereby suspend sections 418, point 1015B and 418.108 of the Texas Government Code, chapter 81, subchapter E of the Texas Health and Safety Code, and any other relevant statutes to the extent necessary to ensure that local officials do not impose restrictions inconsistent with this executive order, provided that local officials may enforce this executive order as well as local restrictions that are consistent with this executive order. What I'm reading is that the executive order of the governor specifically requires that the local officials have an order that is consistent, any, any orders or ordinances passed by local officials, that they not be in conflict with the governor's executive order. That they have to be consistent with the governor's executive order. Therefore, it's my opinion that the governor's order by itself, you know, in and of itself, classifies an offense, an offense of the executive order, executive order, the governor's executive order as a class B misdemeanor. And I read you that first section when I, the last whereas clause in that governor's executive order. So the governor's executive order itself classifies it as a class B misdemeanor. Trying to classify it as a class C misdemeanor. That is inconsistent with the governor's order. Not only is it inconsistent with the governor's executive order, it's also inconsistent with the county's judge's order, order number seven, the first amendment to order number seven, that has a similar language to the governor's executive order. So both the governor's executive order and the county's first amended order, the county judge's first amended order number seven, they both classify any offense of the stay at home order as a class B misdemeanor. The town here, by trying to, by passing this ordinance, is trying to be inconsistent with those two orders, which are strictly prohibited, in my opinion. Okay, they're trying to make it even less, less, lesser offense than what the governor says this offense should be. Okay, so in my opinion, I strongly advise against passing this ordinance to make it a class C because it is inconsistent with not only the county's order, but the, the more importantly, with the governor's executive order. Even, we had a discussion when we had a video conference about if I, maybe a way to tweaking it to make with, with regard to the county's order, to make it okay. However, having read the governor's order now, I no longer feel that we can tweak it because the governor would have to tweak his executive order to make it or allow municipal, local officials to classify it as a lesser offense. So even if the county said, we're okay with you all doing it like that, and we're okay, and even if they tweaked, if the county judge tweaked his order to say that municipalities within the county's jurisdiction can classify it as a, as a, as a lesser offense, like a class C misdemeanor, that still is inconsistent. But if the town did that, the higher order, which is the governor's executive order, that, it makes it a class B. So you'll be inconsistent with the governor's executive order. Therefore, it's not permissible. So I strongly advise against this, against it, even if the county decided to tweak their order. I think it doesn't, it, it does not match the governor's executive order, which is the controlling order. I strongly advise against passing this ordinance.
Chief, do we have Alessandra on the line?
Yes, sir, she is, she's on, she's on right now.
I'm definitely open to opening the floor up to you, if you have any comments on that.
I think that within the governor's order, that would go back to section 418.173 of the Disaster Act. And that's penalty for violation of emergency management plan. You know, which says a state, local, or inter-jurisdictional emergency management plan may provide that failure to comply with the plan or with the rule order or ordinance, which would only be municipal, adopted under the plan is an offense. The plan may prescribe a punishment for the offense, but may not prescribe a fine that exceeds $1,000 or confinement in jail for a term that exceeds 180 days. So it's either or, and you know, as, as Henry discussed, when we talked about this with the county attorneys, they were also in agreement about the lesser included offense. And you know, the priority of these disaster declarations is just to get enforcement and to have people, you know, actually follow these precautions that we need. And I do believe that the, the governor's order would allow for an ordinance by the town to establish a class B misdemeanor based on this section of the, of the government code.
Chief?
I have a question, guys. There's a question. If we were to pass this, would that be a problem for the town? Have we broken the law? That's the question.
So. Thoughts on that, Alessandra?
Sorry, I didn't quite make that out. What did you, what did you say about if we did something with the county, would that be breaking the law?
Correct, if we pass this, will the town be breaking the law and, or conflict with the state? That, that's the question.
No, no. In my opinion, and in the opinion of the other attorneys I work with, it would not be in conflict with state law. Just going under even the Emergency and Disaster Act that I just referenced in 418, as well as other emergency procedures, it is our opinion that it would not be against state law.
Counselor Alfaro, this is, this is Henry Palomares. Counselor Alfaro, I believe that it would be in violation. The town could end up being sued. Maybe not from the state, obviously, probably not, not from the county, but more so by someone that may be charged with this, with a, with an offense under this ordinance. So I strongly advise against it. Saying that they cannot be, this, the, the ordinance can't be enforced. I mean, this, the ordinance can be enforced, but what I'm saying is not as a class C misdemeanor. The enforcement mechanism is, is as a class B, which is consistent with the governor's executive order, more importantly, and, and also with the county. The, if you look, if you look at the ordinance, the town's ordinance, you'll see that all of it is derived from this COVID-19 pandemic. And this emergency management plan has been activated because of this COVID-19 pandemic. If you read the ordinance that was given to you and the original one that I had drafted, these ordinances all derive from, okay, the root of it is from this COVID-19 pandemic and the implementation of this, in that, or activation of this emergency management plan. So.
Any other cities or municipalities in El Paso County that passes similar ordinance like this? Like the one we're trying to pass, guys?
Actually, I can speak to this. I do know that in Son of, as well as in Horizon, they pass these ordinances.
Is it very similar to the one we're looking at?
It is very similar. The difference is that the penalty in this one that I drafted for Anthony, I made it the maximum that, you know, you could, under this code, for $1,000, which is allowable under the Texas Local Government Code for health and safety precautions and normal, you know, code violations in municipal court.
We don't wanna be the people who are basically approving something and be the first set presidents and get sued. You know, we're a small community, guys, I don't know, we have the money for a lawsuit.
Can I say something, guys?
Hey, hold on. John, we're gonna, can you, just give me a second. So we hear key terms being thrown around, right? Not maybe the county, not maybe the city, not maybe the state. You know, we are filing ideally, you know, in, in the ideal reasoning behind enforcement on following with what the governor's recommendations and all are. I think for us, you know, and Henry mentioned it, you know, looking at a lawsuit, you know, there, there's a couple simple questions, right? When you're looking at lawsuit, whether it's the defendant, if you really think about it, why are they gonna wanna sue if we're giving them, if we're, if we're actually enforcing a lesser charge on them than the county or the city or the state? Because a class B misdemeanor could include up to jail time. And here, we're specifying the ordinance to fit our municipality as a class C, which is, you know, ideally a non-arrestable offense. How, or explain to me how somebody would wanna sue cuz they wanna take the heavy part?
I would sue based on principle, Ben.
See, and then, and then another thing, not just cuz they get arrested for these things that they're gonna be in there for, for a long time. A lot of, a lot of times, these class B misdemeanors spend the night and then they get released. I know because I work in, I work more or less in that field. And I've seen it every day, it's, their class B misdemeanors are going in, DWI's are going in one day and coming out the next day or the following day. See, and in our community, we don't have people, too many people that can afford a fine of $500, $600. Right now, with the, the way things are going, I'm sure that a lot of, a lot of our community doesn't have the money to pay $150 for it.
And that's why we're going with the lesser charge, Eddie, so we can establish some accountability. I mean, to be, you know, put in that premise where they can possibly be jailed and whatnot, you know? And that's the reason why we're going for, forward with it as an ordinance. And exactly, you know, with the conversation that we had with the county attorney, with Alessandra and Henry, basically, you know, we had two out of three legal saying they have no issue or conflict with the ordinance that we were trying to pass. You know, they gave some good kudos on some things in the fridge and details that we had within that ordinance. And ultimately, both parties, you know, from two out of the three saw the issue. So what I see here being the, really just, you know, legal opinion in regards to the interpretation. But overall, from what we heard from the other legal departments, which we did speak with the, the county attorney, which, you know, Henry had specified in the last meeting that we wanted to get a hold of, and they were also in agreement with us.
Mayor, if I can just say something as to that and to the earlier item that you covered. But as to the county attorney, they said they didn't have a problem with it, but it's easy for the county to say that because if the town gets sued, I don't think that the county's gonna cover and, and, and defend your lawsuit. So of course, of course, of course, of course, they're saying, we're fine with it. In other words, it's up, basically, it's up to you all. You know, that's kind of what the town said, I mean, the county said, you know? So then, as to the other issue that you brought up about what would a defendant sue when they're gonna be charged with a lesser offense? They could be, they're gonna, they're, they can sue arguing that they, they were unlawfully charged and they shouldn't been, been charged, that they were inappropriately charged and therefore, you know, their constitutional rights were violated by being charged that way. Okay? And that, that, that would be the argument there.
Now, what, what was the whole point then in trying to get the county attorneys in a meeting to discuss this? If in fact, you're turning around now saying that, you know, they're gonna say that and it doesn't matter. And now, at this point, cuz at the time, it was just, you know, a disagreement in regards to opinion. But now, you know, the, the new executive order wasn't enacted yet. Now you're relying on new executive order in regards to your basis, you know, on, on not moving forward or recommending the ordinance. But I mean, why so much back and forth? You know, if you want the county's opinion, why do we waste that meeting and end up setting a meeting with them to get their opinion, their legal opinion in regards to our ordinance? If it's something that, you know, we don't, you, you're, you're kind of not saying now that we shouldn't take into consideration.
Okay, let me answer your, what you brought up, mayor. First of all, I thought the meeting with the county was gonna be for the purpose of finding out why they, you know, where, where, where are they filing their cases? Cuz in, under the county judge's order number seven and the first amendment order, to order number seven, it as a class B misdemeanor. Okay, so if a sheriff's, deputy sheriff issues a citation in the county, you know, my, my, I was, what I thought the meeting was gonna cover was, okay, well, where are they filing it? Obviously, they'd have to file it in the county court. Now, then it ended up turning into that meeting, instead of addressing that issue, ended up addressing the ordinance that you all are trying, are presenting here today. And apparently, the county attorney had already been in contact with the attorney that you all hired, Mrs. Gad. And apparently, they had already been sharing that I wasn't privy to those conversations and the, that ordinance, that proposed ordinance was being shared. So when the, we had the meeting, which I thought was gonna cover one topic, ended up covering. So when the, we had the meeting, which I thought was gonna cover one topic, ended up covering a different topic. Okay? Because when the first topic that I thought we were gonna, the only topic that I thought we were gonna cover is again, where were they gonna be filing? And then basically, the chief would end up filing in the same place that a deputy sheriff would be filing. So if the deputy sheriff is filing in the county court, okay, then the chief can enforce the ordinance and file in county court as well. Okay? But that, that, that wasn't covered at all. It ended up covering, the meeting ended up turning into covering the proposed ordinance. Okay? And then at that time, when we had that meeting, this executive order from the, from the governor hadn't come out yet. When it came out, I read you the relevant provisions that talk about inconsistencies with the executive order, the governor's executive order. Okay? And then, and again, I covered with you that the governor's executive order itself makes it a Class B misdemeanor. Everybody's making it a Class B misdemeanor. Well, not everybody. I guess there were a couple of municipalities, San Luis, Sadio and someone else. I, I don't recall who the other entity is. Okay? The city of El Paso isn't doing it. Okay? I mean, I think, you know, that, that would be a good reference point. I mean, to me, if, if you be, make some precedent, then, you know, you along with San Luis, Sadio and the other entity are, may stand to, to do that. And of course, litigation is gonna cost you. So I strongly, I don't think it's worth the litigation risk, in my opinion. Okay? And I've covered that with you all before. I don't think it's worth it, okay, financially for the town. The town has more important ways to spend their money and to spend it on their constituents, okay? Litigating an issue that could have easily been averted by having the, the police department's officers file in the county court as a Class B misdemeanor? I mean, you do the math, you know? But if you all want to make precedent, you along with those two other entities stand to do that. The city of El Paso hasn't changed it. You know, they're, they're, so anyway.
I do believe that the city of El Paso does have an ordinance making it a Class C fine-only misdemeanor. And I mean, I think that it's something that has been the norm in different municipalities, but also going back to what we just talked about with the executive order that was just issued, the penalty has, you know, always been the same, that the county was looking at in reference to what the governor had said. That hasn't changed. So the new things that were issued by the governor, none of that would be different from what was discussed in the meeting with the county. And additionally, this, you know, treating it as a lesser included of the Class C misdemeanor just frees up the discretion of the police department to be able to, you know, determine, okay, can we send people, you know, can we arrest someone and take them into town? Do we have the resources to do this? Is it this, you know, they, it gives them more freedom to discern where the offense falls within, within how heinous it is. You know, it gives you guys more power to actually make sure that people are following the COVID orders. And of course, people don't have to pay, you know, the maximum fine amount. They, but you just set it at a certain amount so that, you know, it's, it's up to then your prosecutor to have, or whatever the amount is, based on, you know, trying to get people to follow the law. It's, it's just the norm for municipal fines and the way that you set up ordinances. And I think that it's a power that's well set out in the local government code as well as in the disaster act.
Thank you, Ms. Gad. That was very well said. Any open comment, Mr. Weeks, Mr. Garcia, anything else that anybody would like to add?
Okay, so I was on the conference call. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
I was on the conference call last week, and it was my understanding that you guys were trying to get answers from the county for a week or two. And then, you know, you decided to go this route and, and then, you know, Henry, you did bring up last meeting too, on the conference call, that you're afraid that we could be sued. And I, and I specifically asked you, who, do you think we're really gonna be sued by issuing a lesser charge? If people are gonna sue us for not throwing them in jail? And you said, well, we might have to drop the charges. So you're, you say litigation, you say sued, but to me, you said we might have to drop the charges. So I, I really feel, I mean, tell me if I'm wrong, Henry, but as our prosecutor, if we enable this, you're not gonna, you're not gonna defend the town.
I will prosecute the cases if you all pass them, but that doesn't mean that somebody can't, that's been charged, won't end up suing civilly the town.
So what does lesser charge, lesser included mean? I don't understand. To me, lesser included means this is, piggybacks off the, the other one. We're not superseding them. We're just less, can somebody explain to me what lesser included means?
In my opinion, this is not a lesser included offense because the governor's order makes it a Class B, and so does the county's order, but more importantly, the, the governor's executive order. Okay, it's like, it's like, it's like the state saying, for example, I'm just giving you an example. A burglary is, is a felony by the state and the town making it a, a burglary, making it a theft as a, as a, as a Class C.
So I gotta, I, I need to understand, how is the Socorro can require the wearing of masks? But the county and the state haven't done it yet. So they recommended it, but Socorro's superseding what they're saying and requiring it. How did they, how are they able to do that?
The executive order specifically, and I can read to you the provision, the governor's executive order specifically allows the town to be more restrictive, allows the local governments to be more restrictive than the, than the exec, than the governor's executive order. In this case, you are not being more restrictive. You're being less. The punishment is less. So instead of.
Being more lenient.
It's, it's being more, it's born, being more lenient than what the town, than what the governor says this offense is. So again, I'm saying, it's, I don't think it's worth the litigation risk. You know, maybe if, I haven't seen that the city of El Paso, as Ms. Gad said, maybe, okay, maybe they have done that, but they, they have more, more financial wherewithal to, to, to defend a civil lawsuit. Now, if you all wanna proceed down that path, all I'm saying is I strongly advise against this. I don't think it's worth the litigation risk.
And here's where it goes. And you know what, like, like Henry said, or, or Mr. Chavez said, we're looking to be more lenient. You know, if we're looking to be more lenient just for the fact of establishing accountability, because obviously, you know, a lot of the written warnings and stuff, how many did El Paso issue out? How many did we issue out? People aren't taking it serious, you know? And unfortunately for us, you know, we live in a town that seventy, seven, more than seventy percent of population is below the poverty level. So, you know, when we look at it, at being more lenient, but being able to establish a little bit more accountability with them, you know, determining maybe a lesser fine, if in fact, I think even in a impoverished community, that would make a difference. Because not everybody has the means to pay a lot, up to a thousand dollars or serve a night in jail and whatnot. And even a le, a lestrie fence might be more effective in establishing accountability and, you know, making sure that these people, you know, if, if they end up, you know, getting, getting it again or whatever, after they get the written warning or something for, for violating the, the ordinance, establishes accountability, then I see that regardless as a win for the town in moving forward with taking overall public health as its priority. But Ms. Gad, you said you were gonna say, I, I apologize.
Yes. Oh, no worries. Something else I was going to add is that with the, you know, the added restriction of wearing a mask in Socorro, as well as, I don't know if you guys have seen the news story, also in Laredo, they do the same thing with the one thousand dollar potential fine attached to not wearing a mask. Those are all being counted as Class C misdemeanors that are being enforced by ordinance. You know, that's the only thing that can be enforced in a, in a municipal court, is a Class B municipal ordinance. It's not going to include, you know, jail time or a Class B. But those cities with those stricter requirements, which of course, you know, Anthony could add something like that as well if it wanted to, as a Class B misdemeanor, that's all that they're doing. They're, they're, they are taking that freedom to make a stricter thing, but they're enforcing it through their own means within the municipal court.
Sounds good to me.
You know, I actually agree with Ben also in regards to the lesser fines and for our people here, instead of being thrown in jail. I, I think that's really important. So hearing, hearing both sides, I think that, you know, maybe we, we should go through with this and and see what happens. If we get sued, then so be it. We do it for our constituents. I know it's difficult because we're a small community. We've got 5,000 people and we don't have a lot of funds, but that's what I think, you know?
Perfectly right. Look, the entire reason why we wanted to put something like this forward is, is the establishing the accountability, but also taking, you know, public health, you know, as a priority. But also not wanting to pretty much chastise and, and put people that might not have the means through the wringer, you know, when all we're trying to do is establish people to follow the ordinances, follow the rules so we can minimize the potential exposure, you know, for COVID-19. And, you know, I'm even, you know, in agreement, you know, if we even add it to this ordinance on, you know, all public places and stuff, that people should be wearing masks as well because, you know, we look at, we all look at those COVID maps online. I mean, I know everybody's seen them. El Paso East Side, three eight, three eight zip code everywhere, thirty eight, forty cases, seventy two. West Side's starting to build bigger ones. Here in Anthony, you know, even though it's still in Vinton, you know, there's one case by us. But then if you saw the New Mexico maps, we have eleven cases in Anthony, New Mexico and La Unión. So, I mean, for us, we're trying to get back to business. We're trying to get businesses opened up. I mean, we have to step it up in, in a sense by taking a step back and, you know, doing a little bit more lenient protocol with the ordinance in order to just try and get back to business, minimize the potential spread and flatten that curve. And you've seen the triple digits that have been happening in El Paso and stuff like that. And, you know, how, how El Paso has their hands full with citing and following up on these individuals. I think here in Anthony, we can knock it out real quick and, and stay on top of it a lot easier than they can. But I just, I don't feel, you know, with that thousand dollar, up to a thousand dollar, you know, violations and this and that, that it would be, I think it'd be bad, you know, even if we're trying to establish accountability and doing the lesser form and, and a little bit more lenient, I think can work for us. It's, we're in the best interest overall of the community, you know what I mean? It, that's, that's the best interest and we have good intentions in doing this. And for me, you know, hearing both sides going back and forth and listening to all the COVID talks, all the way from the governor's office, all the way to our local, you know, offices and representatives, you know, discussions, I think we're doing the right thing. And to me, right now, it's just a, a difference in a matter of legal opinion. But overall, you know, I think we still have a strong case supporting what we're trying to do. And, and I would, you know, support Henry also move forward with, with adopting this ordinance.
There's also been another important piece of this ordinance besides what we've been discussing, and it's the fact that it'll limit the businesses to half their capacity. And it'll, it'll push the businesses now to enforce and make sure that people are following the social distancing, which I heard, you know, when, when the city of El Paso was first trying to do their stuff back in March, two of the city council in El Paso were practically begging them to do it, but they won't. You know, they, they're afraid to make, you know, the businesses mad. But like you said, we're surrounded now and we're a neighborhood, you know, we're a bed and breakfast community, you know, hardly anybody. You know, it's not like we're isolated in Alaska. Everybody that lives here works somewhere else. Everybody in Anthony, New Mexico, half the people drive through our town every day. And, and they come to our stores. And we, we have to have something where we're enforcing a little bit. I mean, what I think we've seen is San Luis, Sadio, Socorro, Horizon kind of getting frustrated because they're having to, you know, follow the lead of El Paso, who's kind of, you know, they had over 10,000 calls, they've had over thousands of visits, but they've only had less than like a hundred citations as of last week because those are for multiple offenses because, one, they don't have the manpower and two, they really don't want to enforce it. But now it's getting bad. And so I think we also have to think about everything with this ordinance that we're doing.
Yeah, and we get the call, hey chief, I get, I know you get the messages, Sean, about individuals, you know, in the stores and the supermarkets, whole families going in. And you're right, we know, we did add an occupancy section to this. And, you know, a lot of the stores are complying, like Walmart. But here on the, on the smaller, on the smaller chains, it's, you know, a lot of them aren't complying with it. And I think this would just be an extra added measure to just, you know, get people to comply and say, hey, these are the rules. It's in paper. This is what you gotta do, you know, and, and be strict about it. Because at this point, we do need to be strict, but like I said, you know, we don't need to jail anybody or anything over it. But, you know, we need to establish and make sure that we're putting our foot down and saying that we're serious about public health. Any other closing comments from any members? Ms. Gad, did you want to say anything else in closing?
No, you know, that's, that's really, I think I, I've said everything that I'd like to say to you all for tonight, unless you have any more questions.
I appreciate it.
I'd like to say something if you, if you would allow me.
That's fine, Henry.
Mayor, I just want, want this to be clear. I'm not saying that the provisions, that I'm against the provisions in the ordinance that deal with these restrictions, okay? First of all, you didn't even have to do it through the form of, of an ordinance, the way you're doing it. It could have been through, because of the previous ordinance that you've done, mayor, it could have been, and the council had passed. It could have been through a, a directive, a, like we did the, the last time. Okay, but, but I wanted this to be clear is, I'm not against these restrictions, okay? What I don't agree with, okay, is it, so I agree with that, with the restrictions, but I, I don't agree with where, what the proper forum is for filing this and, and the punishment range. Okay? That's what I don't agree with. And therefore, I do not, I, I strongly advised against passing this ordinance in the form that it's written. Okay? So I just want that to be on the record, that I advised against it. I don't think it's worth the litigation risk.
Duly noted, Henry. Thank you very much, sir. Any other comment from any other council, Mr. Chavez, Mr. Garcia?
I've been trying to text a friend of mine that works downtown in the courts, but apparently he's not answering because his, his phone's going straight towards me. So, I'm, I'm, I'm not aware yet, but I, I, I don't think I'd be willing to take a chance on it either. Of course, that's just my, my, that's just me thinking, you know? I'm not, I just don't think I would be able to go along with it either.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Garcia, any final?
Ben, I've been, I've been listening to everybody dispute, discuss the, the case. And I'm worried about, about the, our prosecutor not prosecuting our, our ordinance. I'm worried about the fines that are gonna be put on to our residents. I'm hoping that if I decide to vote for this, I hope it's gonna create a better accountability in our police department to, to have more power to cite these people and get, get these people under a safe control. Because I haven't been out, they haven't allowed me to go out to the streets. I mean, I'm in jail here, but I can understand why. I'm a diabetic and I got high blood pressure and I got all of these in the world. And so I'm trying to stay away from it. And, but I, and this is just me. It's the, I'm, I'm still at, at an undecided point. So maybe by the time we go on, on the voting, I might make a decision by that time. But I hope that if I do decide to go with this, it's gonna help our police department.
And just remember, guys, remember, what we're doing, you know, when you're looking at fines for the town and this and that, we're actually looking to be more lenient on this. And like Ms. Gad said, you know, even in El Paso, they're classifying as, as Class C misdemeanors, you know, with these citations. So, you know, they're taking the lesser route. It's just, us as a general law municipality, it's a little bit different than a home rule. But I think for us, you know, this is the ideal way that we should go. I'm in support of it. And like I said, you know, it, to me, I'm, I've listened to both sides of the legal argument. And ultimately, you know, we're, we're doing this with good intention.
Ben, can I say one more thing based off of Eddie and Joe said? When we did the conference call last week, guys, you know, I, I didn't understand, like Henry said, he didn't kind of understand some things, how the meeting was gonna go either. I, I was asked to fill in. And, but what I saw was, I think her name was E. Rosales. I think her name was E. Rosales. She, is she, she was a deputy county attorney? I believe, is that, does that sound right, Ben?
She is.
Deputy county attorney?
Yeah, she's, she's an assistant county attorney and she got one of her, um. Fellow coworkers, I think maybe or, or one of her counterparts to join in on it as well too.
So there was another assistant county attorney that came on the conference call too. And then they also referenced a third assistant. This county attorney that knows more about criminal because they did like a powwow before they met with us. So that they could look at all, everything. And we had three assistant district attorneys say they don't see anything wrong with this. I just want to make that clear to everyone, if you didn't know, that it wasn't just like one person. There was another lady on the phone and they kept referencing a gentleman that has more of a criminal background, but he couldn't be there because he was dealing with another conference call. So there was three assistant county attorneys have, not only did they not have a problem with it. They liked how it was written so much that they were going to take a piece of section eight and make it part of theirs. So I just want to be clear with that.
All right, now that, um, I think we've pretty much, you know, put in all the discussion that was relevant and necessary to the, uh, discussion and the agenda item. Um, do I have a motion on the table?
I'm going to motion, guys, but here's the deal, why I'm doing it, because I don't want to see that eventually when we open up the parks. Kids are playing, parents are there, they violate them, violate the law and. We show up and we throw the mom and dad in jail. I mean, that's the bottom line. I don't think that we want to do that.
What do you mean?
What's your motion?
My motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilman Alfaro to approve the ordinance. Do I have a second?
I'll go ahead and second.
I have a motion seconded by Councilman Garcia to approve the ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Okay, I have three ayes, uh, with Mr. Alfaro, Councilman Weeks, Councilman Garcia. With Councilman Chavez voting against, uh. All, 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 I guess all in favor. We have three ayes. Any opposed? We have Mr. Chavez. Motion carries, three to one. Thank you, guys, for, uh, you know.
Give me one second, sir, so I just, uh, call, roll call. Mayor, for weeks.
Yes.
Councilman Garcia?
Yes.
Councilman Chavez?
No.
Councilman Alfaro?
Yes.
Alrighty, uh, normal, get back to you guys with the, uh, following, uh, the next, uh, meeting date. Sorry, because my, uh, email phone app closed. But we don't have anything else on the agenda, so the next regular meeting is scheduled at six thirty PM on Monday, April twenty seventh, two thousand twenty. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Chavez, seconded by Councilman Garcia. Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned at seven thirty four PM. Thank you, everybody. Have a great afternoon.
You too.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.